Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting in Town Coventry on July 18th, 2022. All meetings order at 6:01 PM. We'll go around the room here first and introduce ourselves, starting with Mr. Gallo.
Dave Gallo, Scott Brier, Scott Munt.
Phil Marquette, Scott Ward.
David Barlow, acting Secretary to the Select Board. Matt Maxwell, potential Town Administrator.
Kristi Ellis, Speaker on municipal for Coventry Village School. Ericine, that resident.
Dominic Jabe, Department of Fire, District, Department of Community.
And we'll jump on Zoom now, Mr. Roy.
Christopher Roy, Newport Dale Express.
Good on you, Derek.
Planning Commission, Department of Planning Commission, School Board.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we are underway. Go to you, Mr. Chair. I want to call the meeting to order. We have changes or additions to the agenda?
Did we add the asbestos, too?
Yes, we can. I have the function, the paper.
You can look at that real quick.
Add that under other business.
There is a discussion about asbestos removal in 150 Main Street. And then under other business. I would like to add under other business, the Select Board Meeting Minutes Review from June 20th and June 27th. Included in your packets, head table and. And also add in the. Discussion and potential approval of. Payment for our painting contractor for the meeting house. Elijah Cleveland Meeting House. Also in our business. Okay, any other changes or additions? We got a pending. I will move on to allowing for public comments.
I could run out the jingly that one.
That's true. So do we have any public comments?
This might be given every time.
Actually, I do have you on the agenda next.
Okay.
We'll say no public comment. And then I'll move on to item number four, the new Coventry Village School Principal.
So I just wanted to come and say hello. Actually, I know most of you, except for Dave, although I am Gallo.
I am.
Yeah, I am from the North Shore area.
Walters family?
Yes, you would be my grandfather. I'm Gaylord's, oh yes.
Nice to meet you.
I've always asked if I'm related to you, but I never really met you.
I know, it is, it is a funny deal, and then there was a Charlie Gallo. Two that, I don't know if that was your family, but we had a Charlie Gallo. One was long, one was out long. Guess which one won?
Probably no more.
So I just wanted to come and introduce, make sure you saw face. And see what it might be that you might want to know about what's happening at your community school. Think especially with the building project happening right now. As much information as I can share with the community and kind of be that part of the information. What I'm, what I'm here to kind of offer that and. Don't expect you to kind of know off the cuff, but if there are specific things that you'd like to know about this school, just shoot me an email. And I'll do my best to put that information out and present that either through writing or through coming to share. Here, that's the best way.
Yeah, that would be nice.
You wonderful school.
We do, we're very lucky.
So those of you who don't know me, I, I'm not new to the administration. Please, I was the first to work J Westfield for about a decade. So I'm dusting off those principal teams again this year. And I have to do my best to make sure we're meeting your values in the purpose of the school's house. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Come back next year.
Goes by quick. So are you, you're just, you're just a fill-in for the rest of this year?
So I've been at Coventry for the last two years. After leaving J Westfield, I wanted to go back into the classroom again. So I did three, four, five literacy and annuals free media and then literacy coach. So the plan is that I'll be able to go back into the literacy coaching position after, after this interim year. It's a pretty important year and the board recognized that. And I think they were looking for someone with a bit more experience to manage the complex needs of their role. With this building project on top of it.
That's great, and when are they expecting to break ground?
Not until, and I'm looking to Matt right now, too, but I don't believe until next.
Spring, 2023.
Spring, yeah, and then finishing the following October is kind of.
They're gonna have to do a little bit, we'll squeeze them on in next fall, but they'll finish up.
So you'll see the modules being moved hopefully next week by the beginning, and that'll be kind of your first indication that things are, things are moving along. That's a signal of progress. That we will need the module this year. I was gonna say, if you're not breaking ground, it'll mention, but we, we still need that space for the school program.
So what happened with the module?
At least that will go back to.
So is it a municipal lease where you can just buy it for a dollar again?
I don't know, we could, we had two-year lease and then we extended it.
Like on the trucks?
Right.
Where, yeah, you can buy it for a buck.
I don't know.
Buy it for a buck, maybe.
I did look into that for you.
That would be something to look into, it might be. Might have a place to put it.
Yeah, I will certainly do a little research.
You never know, right?
Don't overwhelm David right here in the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah, anybody have any other questions for Christie?
Thank you for stepping in.
Yeah.
I'm sure your meeting will be interesting, but I'm gonna speak to Tom.
Thank you.
Good to see you, bye. Okay, number five on the agenda, appointment of the new Town Administrator. Turn that over to the Board, discussion in action.
Are we able, we're able to just to appoint Matt, right?
Sure.
Do we need?
We've probably did a hiring agreement.
Yeah.
I've done the onboarding paperwork in terms of payroll and. Some basic IT stuff. Keys.
So I make a motion that we appoint Matt Maxwell as the new Town Administrator. Per the contract that he has signed, he signed it already, right? Matt signs, yeah. All is in favor? Hi.
Hi. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very excited.
Dave, you can't move over yet. He's like, I'm going.
Your signature on that, though.
I was gonna say, one of us needs this.
Yeah, yeah. It's not a contract, it's a hiring agreement.
Yep.
Actually, no, you did sign it.
I think Chris is trying to.
I brought that up, too. You signed what?
I think that's Chris on the phone, the, the other, no, no.
Just got unmuted, Chris.
That looked like the daily's number.
That's all right, it's gone now, okay. Number six, ARPA funding allocation procedures discussion. And I've added this. Introduction with discussions individually with board members, as well as kind of the prompting from. We need to ask for some ARPA money. We do have to, I think, work out some sort of procedure where we can fairly distribute that money. Some sort of decision process. We currently have received half the funds, about 157,000, well, exactly 157,534 dollars. The other half will arrive this fall, so totaling out about 315,000. So we could, in theory, pass out half of it at this point in time. Data's in thought, what I would propose and open for discussion is that we have a committee. Where you, as a Select Board, appoint one of your members to serve on the committee and then. Potentially the Treasurer, the Town Administrator, or Clerk and Town Administrator, some other combination. That looks specifically at the different ARPA requirements that come in, so we. Have to think of some way that we might want to advertise it or otherwise make it known that it's. Available or not, depending on the board first. And evaluate the requests that come in. And hand over a prioritized list to the three of you for. For the discussion and approval, disapproval, or reorder.
There's a listing. Well, have you seen any, like, online from any other towns, any applications? Like that, like, so the Fire District would fill out an application and present it to the Board and that is out to the process? Just one second, Dom.
I'm gonna have, it might be simple as an email with some details. There's gonna be some acts, something we need to ask from the detailed perspective. So I haven't seen administratively that, but I've seen numerous articles in the local papers about other communities. Boards entertaining requests for ARPA funding for different sets of purposes. Strongly remember any specific ones I've seen, certainly.
Things like, well, we're at a playground. I've seen some others in the problem.
Go ahead, Dom.
So after reading the email that I got today, I actually did a little bit of research. And I spent a whole lot of time on it, it's like, this is my last day that I work, so. I'll be on it more for the next few days when I'm off. Actually, in BLCT, I got all the paperwork. They actually do say that we should have an advisory ARPA committee. Like you said. Personally, having a Select Board wouldn't be a good thing, it'd be a conflict of interest when they had to go and vote. On where the money's gonna be diving, so it wouldn't be right for a Select Member to be on it if they're gonna be turned around and then voted on. I think it'd be a conflict of interest. But it changed, it's changed, the final rule came out in April of 2022. I'm more. I want to go back to 2021. You were saying that you got the first half of that for this year or for last year?
Total.
Total, is that the last for 2021 or 2022?
It's the whole total amount that we're getting after the fact.
It says you get one in September. And then you get another one in the next September, and it's good throughout 2024, and you have to use it up by 2026, December 31st.
Oh. That total amount.
Right. The total amount, but you're gonna get that 315,000 every year, correct?
No.
No?
We get two, two.
Two payments of it.
The first one's already arrived last September.
A hundred and a hundred and.
Which was half.
Okay, 2021.
And then again, it'll be this, probably the September, I call it the fall, it's not.
Yeah, that's what it says in the paper.
Total is the 300 and whatever.
So, I want to go back to about when I was here, I think it was last June. When I was here with Paul Sesto, Blue Water, Pedro myself, where I requested. You're right, Scott, there's actually a letter that I submit to the Select Board. Explaining our situation, or it's, it's actually a template, but. Deb helps boost it up and stuff, and then I will put down the amount likely to get metered. I also understand about what Dave said in here is that maybe if I get app metered. Or just some security, like video or something like that with the first half, and then on the second half, finish the rest of the, of the metering. Here's the thing I got, folks, is that. Done a lot of work. The rate just went up 50 goddamn percent. And it's not, it's not the district's fault. It's just the way it was ran, and then the stuff that I found. And the stuff that I had to do to make USDA happy, there was certain things we had to do that was, was not done before. So we had to pay off a $50,000 loan, it was an requirement that I had to do. Then we had to put money aside for the year. To cover the loans we got from USDA, which are two different loans. On top of this loan that I found out we owe 122,000 for the state revolving loan. That's not covered. So to try to see some light and not run like they've been in the last four or five years, we had to go up on the rates. Now we're stuck, we can't do nothing now. I'm watching out for spending, I go, just the other day, I went and mowed the hay field at the, at the facility myself, my own dime. Just trying to save the district money. So whenever you guys do come up with a committee. I'd just like to be emailed or something so I can go ahead and. I guess admit the paperwork to the proper personnel, it's like I can't do it to you folks, because as of April 2022, they suggest that. You have a committee, Advisory Committee, to spread the allocation out to different places. It also goes to. People that are behind in their rent and goes, there's a list of what this need coverage for, so. I, I just did a quick study because I just wanted to make sure that I didn't over here, I edit. And figured I'd do a little bit of research, and I did, you know, it took about a half hour. And just a 447 page on this final rule. I didn't have a chance to read it.
You're not a speed reader?
There. Been a long, it's been a long couple of weeks, so. Please don't forget about the Fire District. I'm losing a member come October.
From the committee?
Yes.
Was it, you had, you had them all, I was actually gonna ask if you had it all full in that, or?
No, 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 it only been two. It's, it's, it's been a struggle.
So you, it's you and one?
That's right.
You and the one that we appointed?
For a year and a half.
The one that we appointed?
Yes. She's leaving in October. And, and for, for good reasons, she's just. She's not up to it, she, there's things going on medically and all that kind of stuff, you know, she did. She helped me out a lot, trying to get things passed, that was the important thing.
Are you gonna have a meeting, a, a district, whatever, your big meeting?
What we're working on now is trying to get, in October, is actually have a. With a vote.
To get them.
To see if I can get somebody else. I told them one more year and I'm done. So.
Did you, did you have any rough idea, just a rough number, what, what, what does it cost to get a metered, a rough number?
Yeah, so Pedro, thank God for Pedro, he's gonna be the guy that does it, I will assist on my days off where I can. Mike will be free. It'll be $25 an hour, there's 60 connections. There's gonna be some that's gonna be longer to do, and like my, like my house. I have a meter, the old, the old stuff, in the J. You just unscrew, pop the new meter in, screw it back in, you're good to go. So in some, my place, probably an hour, a half hour, 45 minutes tops.
And are the meters, used meters that were getting donated to us, or then new meters?
Yeah, no, they're gonna be new metered.
Yeah.
We are, Pedro, we did talk to Newport to get a meter reader. Which probably right from here, will probably read probably 80%. And then you just go by and then it just read it, that's it, we do it once a month. I would, I would do it, or, you know, whatever, it's easy to do. That's gonna be, that's, that's roughly a grand.
How much are meters per? Or, roughly?
Rough, roughly 15,000, we get, the school is gonna be a little bit more, because it's gonna have to take it three, four weeks, it's gonna be a bigger. A bigger meter, the school will take, the rest will be held same.
So, and maybe, maybe an average of three to four hours per house, would that be on the high end or low?
That'd be the high end.
Alright, so.
Are you talking about labor?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, that's high.
Okay, so the worst-case scenario, 150, 200 hours of 25 grand labor and 15 grand for the stuff.
That's like.
$20,000-ish.
Yes.
Is the Fire District, District has a municipality able to apply independently? They're a separate municipality?
Actually.
That.
The fact that I gave you guys when I was there first time for Blue Water, where it actually stood placed that. The water, it was for water infrastructure. We can't, a lot of the stuff we can't get because our construction's brand new. So we, we're not, we can't get no grants or any of that kind of stuff, because it's a new system. There is no construction or that kind of stuff, so all I can go under is, security's a big one. Is trying to get a, a fence around the reservoir that should be secured.
But that's not the ARPA funding, that's just regular grants that you're talking about, right?
It could come from ARPA funding or the other one, S, what's that, state and local.
State, yeah.
They working together, do they not, Dave? According to this 447th page, it's, 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 it's got a lot in it, I mentioned, like, I guess Aladdin, right?
No, I think what he was going, this was, I remember this was a discussion back then, was at the time. Individual municipal fire districts were not able to grab that ARPA funding specifically. But there had been talk that they might have been able to, but I'm guessing that never changed.
No, as long as we submit that letter to.
I think it only could. No, 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 directly is what he's saying. Directly.
No, as long as it comes through the.
Right, right, right.
But we're good.
Correct, what I'm saying is.
That they would have gotten their own set of funding.
How, they could throw in our funding, and the reason I'm asking that is because I was talking to Mike the other day, who runs Newport Southern Water. I mean, they got a, they got a huge chunk of funding.
But they're part of the town, they're not, I don't believe that they're our municipality.
Who, which town?
Newport Center.
Newport Center.
Yeah.
They're, they're, they're under the town.
They're under the town. They're not a fire district.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they are their own municipality. I do remember that bringing up, I was looking at it too, and at the time, it was not. Fire districts were not able to directly get. So by having, by having the meters, so, okay, now you have the meters. Now by meeting the water, you're gonna have a, you get a certain limit for a certain amount, and then above the limit is X more money?
Right, so, so Scott, so we just passed two meetings ago to try to make things fair for these people that are at vacant lots or still with ample water. It's not fair. So what we took a vote and actually, anybody's gotta, just like you folks, have just got this place over here, you're gonna have a curb stop, right? You're not gonna be paying the full amount, you're gonna be paying 75% of the cost. And if you go to most towns where they're metered, that's how it's broken up, curb stop.
Yes.
And there's water usage, and then after a certain amount of water, then you get another, an over-usage. The thing is with this, Scott, by having metered, would solve a lot of questions. It would find out if there's people running water through the winter. It just, it just, it's better all the way around.
It doesn't sound that expensive to me.
No.
Doesn't sound that expensive to, for the gain, for the gain.
For the, for the gain and possibility for the, for the district members, hopefully we can reduce the price that we just went off. I'm gonna hear some talk, it's, there's not, there's not a lot of happy people, but I. I can't make everybody happy, just trying to make it fair is what we're trying to do.
So Dom, we're gonna work on appointing someone and getting this.
Figure out the name.
We'll get, you know, Matt, would be one of Matt's first projects that he gets started on. And hopefully by the, by the next meeting, we'll have an update, and hopefully by the meeting after that, we'll be able. Have some type of procedure or a team in place to start taking requests and get the ball rolling.
So you think that maybe by October, by October, before I have my meet, my meeting, they'll have something that can give something good to the.
I would think so, by, in theory, by the end of August, I would think.
Okay, awesome, okay, I agree, I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll pull the DLCT recommendations, I vaguely remember that now. They're usually fairly spot on in terms of what.
Yeah, they're.
You know, if we can do this maybe in a two-tranche approach where we've already got half the funding. So maybe we just throw the committee at half first. Then at point, make a decision about the second half.
Okay, well, thanks for coming in, we'll be in touch.
Alright, thanks.
And you can.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
So what can that money go towards, anything?
There's a long, like you said, 400-page paper document, it's a long list of what.
Yeah, essentially, because of the way we accepted it, we can apply it to anything in the municipality.
I wonder where you're talking about.
With the exception of retirement accounts, it can't be used in that, they.
But it's something like town residents would apply for? Or it's gonna be for?
It's gonna be from the municipal side.
It's gonna be municipal.
Another example, another example was Albany had a terrible time on the truck, I think they, I think last week.
You said to buy a truck.
Yeah. You know, in the case of the Fire District, we would have to, most likely. Hand it to them as a managed fund, fund, so we're, we still have to report.
Yes.
You're spot on, correct.
Yeah.
We would have, we would have to give you documentation of all the stuff that we blocked and stuff, that itemized it all. But he's right on, it says that good reporting is actually suggested.
Yeah, so again, federal funding.
Yeah.
Same with the flooding stuff.
Exactly.
Also, were you able to get to passive grants? Have you guys ever looked into passive grants?
Dave, to be honest.
Well, the only reason I'm asking, I know, I know a lot of that stuff, like when you're talking about video, I think, and security might come under one of those passive.
Yeah, and, yeah. I think that's what yours.
Grants, a lot of those grants is, is. Specific to new construction, new upgrades and all that kind of stuff, we're, we're all there.
These are, these are pretty basic, and they're, they're pretty lenient on, but just better.
That's what you're talking about with the fence and the, and the, and the security cameras and stuff, was separate grants.
Well, if, if I could, I don't know, maybe if, if somebody wants to send me that stuff so I can go ahead and look at it, you know, in the street kind of a half.
Somebody behind us, I think, that has done a lot of grants.
Alright. I'll come in, you know, I wanna. Well, you know, to be honest with you, I, I don't have the time.
Yeah.
You know, and it's not fair to, it's not fair to the, to the, to the district, but I can only do so much. I'm still waiting on $23,000 that owed us, owed for the USDA. There's a stipulation on that for me to get that, and that's to get, start the DM audit, which we're working on now. It just, it's one thing after another, but thank you, Dave. Well, any, anything like that where I can try to house on in time, you know, I will.
Just trying to think of those timeframes. I think it's through the city towns that passive and PUCIF.
Oh, that one.
Oh, that's the insurer.
Yeah.
Insurance.
Yeah. It's the DLCT insurance, so.
Oh.
I thought you were actually meaning passive.
No, specifically, yeah, yeah. Well, I've had a lawyer, we already had our lawyers involved and they didn't find out, and so.
No, this is just a place to get grants.
It is?
Yeah, it's just, that's what it is called. Right down there.
Through your insurance company, you just said through a bigger city town.
Yeah, we just paid them $1,000, so. It'd be nice to use them more.
Okay, we'll be in touch, thanks, January 1st to October 31st. That was for this, you, Dom.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Alright, are we ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Next, we have number seven, the Third Vermont Community Leadership Summit on August 10th. We have the ability to. Send one of our residents. In the. Conference fees paid for by the conference. We've had.
One person willing?
One, we have somebody willing, we've had a recommendation from our Town Board on, on that same person. One, we have somebody willing. We've had a recommendation from our town clerk on, on that same person. It'd be a good idea.
So I make a motion that uh. Who's that person? Pranit Menney. Uh to send him to this conference if he's willing to go.
So, uh I guess.
What is, okay, so let's go, what is it?
Yeah, just slightly, we do have money budgeted for things like. Pay the mileage.
Right, you know, the normal.
The normal stuff.
Yeah.
Recoverers town, but the fifty dollar conference fee is paid by.
Yeah. Pranit, would you be willing to go?
It's on August tenth, right? Is that the date?
I believe that's correct.
It is, yes, it is.
I should be able to make it. Well, as long as it'll cover gas.
Yeah, that gets covered.
Yes.
Perfect.
I hope, oh yeah, August. In Randolph. He showed up tonight.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I would be interrupting your motion.
What was the motion here?
Motion to, it was a motion by Scott to um. Have Pranit attend the Vermont Leadership, Community Leadership Summit on August tenth. The registration fees paid for by the council role development, and then we would pay the mileage. I seconded all those in favor. Hi. Thank you.
Thank you, Pranit.
Thanks, guys.
Number eight, the Oregon County Sheriff, we have a couple items to discuss. The order could be rearranged potentially, but first, the speeders on Pine Hill Road, now that it's paid.
So I live on that road and I noticed that, um you know, there had been in the very beginning, some uh. People going fast, but there's always been people going fast um. The last week or two, I think it's calmed down some, but you know, I, I have seen. The state police on that road probably at least once or twice a week.
I think they kind of use that as a back rule.
State police and uh. You know, we had talked about, we had a one or two people complained, so we talked about asking uh the sheriff's department to. Possibly add that to their patrol road, maybe hand out a. Two warnings or tickets if.
Yeah, I didn't get much of a response.
Yeah.
In terms of feedback, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't seen. Places I'm doing for it, for it.
Okay, yeah.
Going to random mobile speed bump.
No.
No, it's nice to not a bump. Oh, on that, on the paving, just to food for thought. Next year, when they do the top coat, Mike Rogers had mentioned where he enters his field in front of Piet's old house. They didn't, so Piet is the yellow house by the Christmas tree farm, you know, where the old barn.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They didn't put any type of. Off, so when he's coming up onto the road with his tractor, he's starting to make a mess of it a little bit.
It's up there, they were greater, I sense.
Yeah, so I told him I'd mention it.
They had thrown a lot of money to destroy that extra tire. So there's just a matter, once I get that.
Possibly when they do the top coat, maybe we can make a turn off entrance to the field.
Oh, oh, I see what you mean, down in the, right on the corner, okay, yeah. And we're gonna go back and do our shoulders here.
So I guess you'll see.
Yeah.
And then make a note. I'm sorry, I got off topic a little bit, but.
Pine Hill Road. Okay, the second part of that is um the billing for May. When I received that bill, um we looked at that and then I meant, huh, why is it only eighty dollars? Another zero. Sent off an email to the sheriff, sent an email replied back, which I believe I. Bited, um which basically says, well, we thought your contract was up in April, so we didn't do anything. Which uh didn't quite know how to react to that um. So I'm coming to you guys for guidance on that.
Did you guys see the email? I have not seen the email. So I'll read it. I read it.
I did.
That one sounded like, it sounded like all the other towns' contracts were up in April and. Hono was. Just under the business, it's okay. Starting back May, ten, or that is correct, we did not have many hours in month of June, as you see. Reason being mostly my fault, as I do all the scheduling and patrol hours, I made mistakes in con- colleges contract and most of our other town contracts at the end of March. But that said, they used up the majority of the hours prior to April, which. Since we didn't up our, well, no, we weren't in the new fiscal year yet, so. We did up it though, right? Not, we went up some. I think we went up thirty percent. So, yeah. But our contract, I think, was up on June thirtieth, I think it's, did you have it? I wanna say you're right.
It's not, it's not unusual in how they do it.
No.
It's like I told Dave, Kurt would go basically the whole year, and you wouldn't see a bill, wouldn't see a bill, wouldn't see a bill.
Then you get all ones.
Last month, he put on a show, year around town, you know. You'd see him, you know, for that month, don't take long to chew up. Big personally, but.
Does make you question, though, their accuracy on their billing. And a steady amount of patrolling would be better, better than.
It's a nice theory, you're gonna get two and a half hours a week.
It was three hours per week. On that other contract, I don't know what it works, I think it still works out to that.
So um but just like Winston Sheriff, I would call me this afternoon, make sure I had the new contract. Um I verified in fact I had received it, so I'll get that out to you.
Okay.
They have a review. I just, no, I'm not dialed into the whole sheriff's thing, so.
Okay, I don't think, I don't think you need to, I don't think.
Doesn't seem right.
I don't think you need to respond back to that one.
I, I did not, but as we're waiting, you know, asking for additional patrolling on Pine Hill instead of getting. Okay, we'll get that out.
I get it. Okay.
Alright, number nine. So thrill of the. Show tonight. Moment everybody's been waiting. The sharing of.
Hate to see how bad it is. Can't see it yet. Oh. It don't go down that far.
Oh, that one, that one didn't do well either. We're alright.
Yeah.
But relatively speaking, we're going fine on that.
Yeah.
Best in sight. So this is the, the point where I have um. Done some of the um. Articles that were voted on in, um back in May, March, I'm sorry, regarding the reserve funds. So I moved uh. Eight hundred and thirty two thousand out of the general fund into the road infrastructure and equipment fund. Thirty five thousand into the reappraisal fund. So you see that reflected in this report, it looks like huge amounts of money are coming out of the general fund. And they are, but they're only, they're moving into the reserve funds, the town's not spending that money, it's just moving it around. And the actual reserve, the actual general fund, actual monthly spending is pretty normal. For June, so. Unless anybody look at that, whoa, what happened? Moving money around for the articles. Um I have tonight, actually, as part of the, I'll do it as part of the warrants, to throw a paper that, the signature cards, update the bank accounts. Including adding the new um infrastructure. I'm sorry, the capital, the roads, capital equipment, reserve funds. And that'll allow me to split out. As was voted on the two, it'll become two road reserve funds, road infrastructure and road capital equipment. So they're currently still combined, but once we have that account formally opened with signature cards. So you should see, uh hopefully by the end of this month from the July treasury report. That. Happening. So finishing off the articles.
Yep.
While I'm meeting.
Yep.
So now the big reveal. The solidly direction.
That's, that looks.
That looks about what it was in the beginning of the whole.
Oh, no, oh no, you know, back in twenty eighteen, we were at uh.
No, I mean, when it went down.
Way under.
Was it?
Yeah, so this um. It's not unexpected. All the markets are getting hammered. But again.
We're still.
We haven't taken any losses, this is all on paper, it's all.
Right.
Theoretical, you know, if we were to, the only way it moves in hurt is if we. Needed the money today.
Yeah.
We had to have the money today. Then it hurts. We don't, we know this is gonna happen, it's gonna happen many more times over the next forty years. And that's the way that, but most of the time it's going in the opposite direction. And actually, we have reasonable timing now because um for fiscal year twenty three, I could go ahead and move the. This year's two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution.
Into the.
John Henry. Place where prices are low.
Yep.
That said, there's nothing to say it's not going lower, but probably not gonna go much more. The way that these things usually is a huge dip and then gradual. That you don't know, but that's okay, we have a very long time to rest. So is there no questions?
Looks good.
I will move on to my next topic, which is mending the wage and salary. Sheets that we did last time. Stop share. So if you recall, I believe it was last meeting, I had. These uh. Very long form wage and salary sheets that the auditor said, hey, where's your wage and salary sheets? I said, let me get those done for you. This for your twenty two, just for your twenty three, I need actually to go back now and fix a couple of things. I'll start with twenty two, I guess. In twenty two, we did a uh. Like we've done a couple of prior years, like I call it a cost of living adjustment. On, on salaries and wages. And in, in this year twenty two, it was three percent. It's, it's been whatever the social security raises insured. Federal government applies across. I had applied that to across the board. And. In one case, the salary for the road commissioner didn't match the budgeted amount. It's more than the budget. Um so the result is that um. We overspent the budget slightly on the road commissioner salary. In this quarter twenty two. My fault. I should have come back and corrected, that's what I'm up to now. We did underspend significantly.
That guy's pretty good, though.
Yes, last year. Well, he deserves it, he's the cost of living.
Budgeting, because I remember it was within one point five percent.
Okay, but that's not what I did. So I'm guilty, they have helped with that, you know, um. We underspent the uh, the part-time uh winter. Budget significantly. So what I'm proposing is reallocating. Somewhere here, I've written out some motions. So there's a couple of motions involved. One is for the fiscal year twenty two, which is to move. To increase the budgeted amount for um road commissioner. Sixty thousand six hundred, I believe I have on there, and then um real. Yeah, reallocate that sixteen hundred from the part-time. Winter road crew budget.
I guess it makes no sense to do the next one if they don't do the first one.
You kind of have to do the first, that's why I'm doing this.
Okay. I'm on, and, oh, David has to abstain.
Yeah, yeah. Unrecommended.
Yeah. I'll move. Okay, so this is doing.
This will be your.
And this is for, this is to cover what was overspent.
Yeah, basically, it is, you're reallocating within the budget, the road, the road fund budget.
Yep.
Reallocating.
The next one is the one to do the cost of living.
They were both cost.
So, okay, yeah.
But that's, that's the cost.
I moved them in the fiscal year twenty twenty road budget for road commissioner salary, and there's corresponding line. In the twenty twenty two wage and salary approval from fifty nine thousand to sixty thousand six hundred. By reprogramming funds in the amount of sixteen hundred from the part-time winter road crew fund line. Which had three thousand nine hundred and twenty two, twenty five dollars unspent. To move. Hold on, paper.
I.
I. And then this one is to. Bring the cost of living up. For the rest of it.
You know, now we move to fiscal year twenty three, where I'm, I'm proposing that the, the road commissioner salary really ought to be adjusted to the. For the cost of living adjustment.
That everyone, that everyone else got.
That everyone else got. It's, it's, it's a not, it's a merit free assignment, right? There's no. Everybody got, no merit involved at all. You had several other raises that were merit based or um certificate based. Other reasons, but everybody got the cost of living.
And I know we had this discussion back in budget time, you, you don't agree with it.
I don't, because we don't have, we don't have. So now you're doing something and saying that we're doing it because of our COLA, but we don't have a. We don't have a policy that states our pay raises are based on the COLA in any ratio form.
We just have done it that way, based on the staff recommending it everywhere. True enough, there's not a, it's not that much. But the problem you run into when some positions don't get it, and others do, is you get this impression.
And then the other problem.
What'll happen is, what'll happen is if we keep you, that, it low now, the other one's raised. Then come time that we gotta.
Rehire.
Rehire or do it again, it's gonna be an even more jump.
It hurts the town if we don't do it in steps like this, I think.
Think he just. It's not good, good for the road. I guess.
Him personally, he doesn't think.
Yes, I disagree with that, but I guess I'm, 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 don't have a say in it. Uh I won't get into it. But I guess if we're gonna, if you are gonna do anything, we have that money set aside in the insurance. If you're gonna do it from a budgeting standpoint.
What do you mean?
You guys appropriated monies for uh health insurance, well, I've never taken. So if you were gonna give me a raise, would you take me out of that?
I think it's, so you.
This is a raise.
Yeah, so there's reprogramming funds. This is reprogramming funds from the part-time road, winter road fund.
That was the last.
And all these.
Do it this year as well because of this.
He was really low this year.
But we, we could then go back and.
Like you said, reprogram.
Yeah, if we, it turns out that we need that money.
I don't think from your overall budget line item is gonna make a difference, your overall budget would make a difference, because like I said, we can move things down like that.
Well. The, the road health insurance is on.
Yeah, it is.
We did budget.
You were correct. Yeah, it's there.
I don't have a good budgeting, I know the definition's one point five, five point two.
Well, I'm terrible at it, so. You've got eleven K in there, and you've got one full-time employee, and so it's. So, yeah.
What is it, seven fifty a month for the help for the?
Yeah. Seven hundred.
Thirty two or something. Is that cheap?
It's ten grand a year.
I know it's a lot, but I mean, is it cheap per se on the market?
About average, yeah.
That is.
No one gets, no one really, no one gets a deal. Deal and whatever the dog.
If you were gonna go on to remind them to connect or whatever, if that's what you're talking about, you're gonna. Pay big money every month.
I don't know what you mean.
But yeah.
Depending on what you mean.
If you make less than forty thousand or fifty thousand, my son gets.
That's why he doesn't want the raise.
My son gets.
You say, well.
Thirty bucks a week or some stupid thing. So does that need to change?
Uh, do we need two more motions? You could add it to it. The two lines. Or just leave it like it is, and then we'll, I need to do a little more math.
Fix it later.
Yeah, because we, we don't know where it's been going. So.
Yeah, I think I'd rather take it from the insurance side since it's not. Right, in cases when it goes over fifteen hundred, you only, you have sixteen hundred left surplus. For winter, eleven.
Oh, we have that much extra insurance.
Seven thirty five, it's like nine thousand. And change. Yeah, ninety three hundred.
I got about two thousand extra insurance.
Yeah.
Take some from that. Can I just say it as reprogram for the treasures? Um, there's no particular rush to do this.
That's what I was thinking.
As long as you're okay with me continuing to pay, which you could always recoup it later, that you don't wanna pay on that.
It'll just get.
Lower paychecks. Yeah, so.
We're good.
Let let me, why don't we, we'll do the fiscal year twenty two ones, we do need to get that.
Which we did.
We did, you did. Twenty three, let me.
Work the numbers.
At you and.
Work at it.
Work at it.
And then we can say, take exactly this amount or. Okay. And then your third one is that, that's bumping the part time.
Yeah, we need to go ahead and do that one. There's no.
That's for the same reason.
Yeah, it's the same. It's actually the part time road crew, but I did bump his thirty dollars an hour. Up. By five point nine percent. Making it thirty one seven seven. It's just an oversight on my part.
Okay, move to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty three wage and salary approval line for the part time road group hourly rate from thirty to thirty one point seven seven. And that's for both winter and summer. Where's the only winter?
I've got money and.
There's a little bit.
Twenty five hundred, maybe.
It could be.
The way I listed on.
It's the same.
It's not split up between one or two. It covers the month.
So move. Hi, all of them favor. Hi.
Okay. So I will be back.
Getting the dirt straightened out.
You know, this is actually the way budgeting is supposed to work. More or less.
Yeah. You make it, then you adjust it.
Never done it under the board. We're gonna get there. Already. And with that, he brings us to number eleven, and the Regional Emergency Management Conference report for September two thousand twenty two, I will hand that over.
So. As being the emergency management director, I also have a hat of the state as. L A P C local emergencies. Planning committee. Has now gone to statewide planning commission, so. When they did that, they changed the local one up here, which covered Caldo or Essex and Norrleens. To an R E M C, Regional Emergency Management Committee, which I, the chair of that, along with I was with the L A P C. But V E M is doing a their. Regional Emergency Management, no, 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 emergency management awareness conference in September. I wanted to see, this will have a stipulation on it. We pay a, it's a two day conference down in Killington. Do a single night hotel room with mileage. There will be a caveat that that V E M provides a single room for an R E M C member, so if I. I'm gonna put my name in to get it covered, if they say, if the R E M C, if the committee, committee says, yeah, then we won't have to just be mileage, but. I'm okay with that. I make a motion to. Extend the mileage and a possible rule if needed fulfilled. For the, for the Regional Emergency Managed Conference support in September. So all those in favor. Hi.
Those that say.
Yes.
So.
Okay. Other business.
Matt, yep, stay.
Right? You didn't have to.
The second one, I think.
Oh, great. Oh, Matt.
No, I didn't. We made a discussion. We don't think from a legal standpoint.
Okay. There's no reason. Okay. Other business.
First with select board meeting minutes. Two sets.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes. June twentieth and the minutes of June twenty seven. All of them favor. Hi.
Oh, and next up, we have painting, Jim James Fitzgerald.
So. I guess we finally have everything we need, James, except for a copy of his insurance. We just have a photo, so he would like to get started, and we'd like to get his first deposit check. I would like to, you know, authorize maybe Phil to. Allow to meet with Dave or or Deb when he comes in, so she can improve, and we have a signed contract, we have the amount. Get the check ready, but we don't give it to him. When he hands his insurance, and I can reach out to him and say, look, your check's in the office. Is she here tomorrow?
She's out of the industry. She's out this.
Alright, so the check's not gonna happen till. Monday. So you could pick up a check here Monday. Maybe.
Late Monday?
Late Monday.
A lot of things have to happen perfectly for it to be done.
Okay, late. Late Monday, and. He needs to bring a copy.
Well, no, it's insurance, it's sent.
Yeah, we need it from the insurance company.
He knows that.
So the the photo you got, was that the one with us listed on it, or just his insurance card?
Okay. And there's still a question of, does he have higher help? Because what he sent us did not have. With his comp, the workers comp.
And that's what the one coming from the insurance attire.
Yeah, so I. I pointed that out to him.
Okay.
He didn't answer back, but he did bring in. Or drop off in the box this. That is W nine.
Okay. You have a chance. Certificate of insurance.
Yep.
So somebody gonna make more, and it has a sub out there too. They don't need insurance.
I did. He has a Starbucks subs. They need to provide the same thing to us. W nine.
Alright. I'll be in touch with you. I'll email you or text you after I talk to him and let you know what's going on and.
Yeah, the subs just need insurance.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
The, it looks like kind of there'd be some risk in that job. Gotta make sure this one is.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yep.
Nice. Like seventy days and five days.
Yeah.
Should be enough room there for insurance.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. So.
Is there motions?
Try to make them.
So as long as it's, I'm not, as long as it happens by Wednesday. Thursday, Friday, I'm gone. Next week is coming. This weekend. Oh, so it should happen. I'll reach out to him, and he needs to get his act together if he wants to get a check Monday afternoon at.
Yeah, it's a tight timeline, maybe.
Maybe, and then if it wouldn't be Monday, it'd be when?
Thursdays, next time Deb's. I think the hard thing is the certificate of insurance.
Yeah.
If.
That should be easy.
Looking at it this week, then Monday.
We need to look at, yeah, he can't just hand it money. We wanna pre, pre, you want him to scan it and send it to.
His insurance.
Insurance company should be able to email.
Yeah, either fax it to us or mail it to us.
From insurance company, okay.
It has to come directly from insurance.
Okay. Alright, I'll reach out to him. Reach back to you, and then he can reach, you guys can talk.
Yeah.
But if that does happen, then you need to advise Phil to say it's okay.
To approve the warrant.
Yeah.
Which that's gonna be done by. Right, so I, as long as I don't want to be arrested, I'm putting the warrant in front of it.
Yeah, yeah.
No.
Alright.
I'll prove it as long as we get some chance.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah. Cause I think, yeah.
I think it's all in part of.
I think it's longstanding.
It's already, we already have it.
Already.
Yeah. Make sure everybody's. And it's a tight timeline.
Right. I know, but every week we push back and push back, but it's not our fault. He needs to have the stuff, and if he doesn't have it, then he doesn't get in the job, but.
Okay, next up, we have asbestos removal at one fifth Main Street. For which we have a proposal.
So we had it tested.
Yeah, tested. He just got back to me this morning, you know, test results. Sorry, Reddit.
So did you end up getting that from the? Company.
Modern.
Fourteen.
Yeah.
So when they remove this, they take it away?
They do everything.
Just the asbestos.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So if we approve this, is there things we need to? Get out of the room. Should we get some stuff out of the home first?
Uh, we don't have to right now, but we.
Put it all, so it says in here, it says if we move, if we have them do it, we have to remove anything movable. I was gonna add to this, add not that part, but to talk about something after, but that was, where is this? Remove all movable items from the workspace before M C arrival in the city. That's on you, you're.
No, this is gonna be too much. It might have been in one row or something.
Oh, as far as where they need to get to, it didn't have to be everything. I didn't pay attention to where it was. I didn't pay attention where it was. So.
We do have the. You don't have the thing that shows where all the stuff is.
It's not that bad.
No, I don't think there's that much here. Not the, but the list, the email list was.
Pages of testing, but very few items, actually.
Kitchen black sink coating. Living room brown decal peel and stick. Exterior window glazing. Yeah, there wasn't much.
They'll be there a day.
For an hour. Move.
Fibers, non fibers, asbestos.
Yeah, so but after this, and we can go, if you wanna tear it down, we can tear it down. You can have a fun, fun day with a big, rent a big machine.
Do you need a big machine?
So. To throw something in your guys' head, if we are deciding to go that route. That would be an awesome training opportunity for fire department.
Can you burn it?
Not burning it, but be able to go in and do things like even. Smash a couple of walls and you're doing, playing around in there.
Yeah, for like, you do it for like a month, and then we tear it down after that. Alright, so I think.
Do we go in? Then Casella said that, will we get, will we be able to get a dumpster?
So I'm not. Completely clear on it. So under our agreement, we get how many tons a year? We get quite a, we get quite a boatload of.
The whole thing will go for free. We're just gonna have to pay. Then the, for the containers.
The actual.
The container and the trucking, I mean, up there, so it probably would actually cost us a hundred, I'm guessing, but probably, I would think a hundred bucks a, hundred or a hundred and fifty bucks a container, wouldn't you think?
I think I just paid. I paid David.
Jeru.
Yes.
He'd be the most reasonable.
I think it was a hundred for the truck, and it was one forty disposal.
Right, charge disposal is gonna be free for the town of Coventry. So I guess we should reach out to Jeremy and tell him we're getting the asbestos moved out of the house, and sometime probably. Sometime in September. Probably, we're gonna tear the house down and. Have it hauled to the landfill.
I mean, they're actually making. Motion for tearing it down.
Yeah.
Or not.
We're just preparing, and we're not doing anything.
Yeah.
Guys are gonna destroy it.
So where I was going with that was that if there was a dumpster there, we would haul out everything out of there. Like that wasn't wanting to, somebody wanted to take it, we were gonna put out to a sale or something.
And now who can we donate, like? There's some stuff in the house.
I have some down there that are.
I'm wondering about the foundation, and if that would work for them or not. You had mentioned having rights going.
That might be the easiest.
Have rights to go get anything, get it, get.
Tell, tell them to grab it, and whatever they make off, it goes to the foundation or something.
Donate something.
Give it to.
Whatever, you can think about that.
That would be the easiest.
Parents Club.
We have rights, but they have to take it all.
Yeah.
And I do have someone that would take the furnace. We want to dispose of the furnace. You just go in there and take it.
But the water heater was moved. I think I saw a tag on that furnace. Wasn't it, was it?
Still new, you know. I have a guy that could use that stuff, that doesn't have a lot of money if if you want, but if. I don't either, but I think if we contact rights. Prior to this, the stuff will be better before anybody gets in there.
Yeah. Before they go in and start doing stuff.
Like have rights auction come and clean out the house. You gotta take it all, and then they can write a check back to.
What do the, what do we actually want them to take, like the stove, wood stove?
I mean, anything, really, probably.
Furnace, they don't want that stuff, I know.
They're not gonna take the furnace or any of that stuff. I have a guy that'll take that, but let's have them take. They're not gonna take the furnace or any of that stuff. I have a guy I'll take that, but let's have them take. They have to take everything on the top two floors, three floors, all the stuff. And I think they will.
Careful gets it, but we'd be careful with how we do that with the furnace and stuff too.
Yeah.
What do you mean? So we can think through that, through the. We got an amazing thing to take down. I've seen it.
I could show him to him, maybe he'd wanna buy it and he could make an offer. That would be better.
Okay.
Maybe somebody can reach out to foundations, see if there's somebody down actually needs one.
Yep.
No, it's like firewood, I'm the kind of firewood, I don't know, who'd give firewood to, I don't know any poor people.
Mm hmm.
The burn wood, I mean, I don't.
Can't get, can't firewood. Okay. Can't firewood. So. Let's do one thing, one thing, yeah, alright, so, okay. Alright, so I make a motion to approve this removal of this asbestos and some of sixty two hundred dollars through uh modern and environmental contracting. All those in favor?
Alright. I have received an email update from James Fitzgerald. He points out that he dropped off was paperwork today. He said the insurance company sent a C Y on July first, so I will go. Look through what we got and make sure it's possible. We already have it.
Okay.
Really is, so jump the check, just because we get so many, I mean. That was coming, I have a pile of COIs on his desk.
Alright, so if we have that, then.
We'll sort through. If we already have it, then I can.
I'll let you.
I can go to the network and figure out how to cut a check.
Right.
I'll let that know.
Alright, so I'm gonna not get involved since you have.
Right.
Let me.
Till he knows if we get the insurance. If I, if we don't have it still, I got direct contact with Jim, so I'll.
Alright.
We'll try to make that happen this week.
So do we want a point? Do we want to point one of us to get a hold of rights and see what they'll take? And then if they take it and they're gonna just buy it. And they can just write it.
Find out how it works. I think it's more, yeah, there's probably a fee where they buy it.
They're gonna buy it. I mean, I don't think there's a lot of value there, but I think to try to like, open it up and give it away onesie twosies, that's not fair either.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was kinda trying to point it off on the foundation, so.
And they, they need place to put it and it's just not gonna get. Right, to move it and to put it in the garage and then have it get ruined.
It was just a matter of if they knew of someone.
Right.
Right immediately, like otherwise we'd say we'd get rid of it.
Well, I guess we could say that have. I'm gonna say have Matt get a hold of foundation, find out if they know anybody and then if not, then have him work with rights on getting stuff out of there. Yep, and if rights doesn't wanna take the furnace and the hot water heater, I have someone that will buy it.
Yeah, like them all, that old bed and stuff, he'll take.
I'm not taking all of that. That's my motion. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion would be to have the new town administrator. Check with town foundation, see if they know of anybody that might need stuff in there and maybe take a look and see what's in there. They're not offering them everything, even the furnace and stuff like that or just.
Yeah, the foundation, yeah. And then if they don't know of anybody, then uh get with rights auction and. Just some pretty cool pieces of furniture. They're not perfect, but there's some cool things if you have nothing. Let's see how that process works.
Water bed, you can put that back in your scum and do, man.
There you go. Was it, there was a mattress? Yep. Okay.
Okay, I digress.
So we have a motion.
So all those in favor?
Alright.
I.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So. There's no reason for Matt to go over there and make an itemize, but it's just.
Take this two seconds walk through.
Yeah.
I'm through, actually.
I'm gonna look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, I think you got a key, actually.
And maybe you can get Leo to come, he had to come down and he can look at it and see if anybody that, if the foundation doesn't wanna mess with it, then we'll just get. We'll just get a hold of rights. They can come and load up whatever they want and give us fair.
Everything else is better than ours to.
Whatever they don't have, we get free to throw it away, so, but it'd be nice to recycle it.
So should we make a motion to allow, sorry about.
I know. The kid across from uh Newport, I don't know. I had sold him some stuff, junk, and he paid okay for stuff I was gonna throw away. I just didn't wanna throw it away.
So there's no, probably should be a motion for the fire department to get the training and then we can work out a date of how long, when and whatever.
You're gonna, you would do the, you would do it after the asbestos was removed?
Yes, yes. And then we can come up, I know we do once a month training, so maybe two months will have it anyways. But we can figure that out then.
Also, I probably will come down. The guy that works for me, I'll have him make an offer on the furnace and the hot water heater and maybe, I don't know, any of those windows any newer?
They are.
They are.
All these ones on the front.
Cause he needs windows. He might even remove those. Do you wanna smash them all?
No, we don't smash them. We just have them in there and, and that could be where we leave them there, we make sure we don't smash them or do anything, right? And then they come out before they get them down.
Okay. If I make a motion that we allow the. Yeah, City and Newport Fire Department to use uh the house next door for uh trick fire training purposes after the asbestos. To all those in favor?
Aye. I guess that's. You're getting them out?
I'll hear you.
Okay.
Good.
Yes. Your full time?
Yeah. Thirty seven hour move. Alright. Alright.
Alright, so before we move on, let's just have a quick, just confirmation, the next meeting would be only on April first. I'm sorry.
August first? Yes, it would, yes, it would be.
I'm sorry, August first. Just to confirm that's.
That's a normal, that's a normal time frame from now.
First and third Monday, August first, August fifteenth.
I may have to zoom in, cause I'm gonna be on the road. So I'm getting out of town, so I'll probably have to zoom in that day, but.
Do we need? Two meetings a month or?
Like, if I was to get the first and then the fifteenth?
I'd recommend catching the next one if you possibly can, just because there's a lot going on.
Okay.
With. Church, house, might need to.
Yes, keep that moving.
Could be a quick meeting.
Yeah, the ARPER thing, see what we can put together to get money with the best way.
I think it probably shakes out like I was describing, um.
Need a committee.
Yes, I.
But it needs.
Okay to have somebody from the select.
I do too, because we're gonna vote on it anyways.
Make a decision.
Right, it doesn't matter. You're gonna just be more informed. You're gonna be like, yeah, I think that's a good idea. Like I personally, from what I gather, I know the foundation, the, the fire district doesn't. Serve everyone in the community, but it does serve fifty people and I think it being needed for twenty five thousand dollars to re, and possibly helping them financially recoup. Money from the higher users. You know, might not.
Anyway, it keeps, but. I think there's a lot of stuff happening. From the local perspective and just kinda keep moving and try to shield the rest of the. Stuff and hold off until the middle, we move on.
Yep. Yep.
That one short meeting, the plan on transitioning between me and Matt is that, you know, I ran this meeting, you'll run the next one, but I'll be here. We'll just kind of. Make sure all that stuff. Of course, we have Phil to make, really make sure it all works, so.
I think you guys are meaningful.
We'll keep pressing on that. Oh. So let's bring this to warrants. There, but I actually.
I had something else, right?
I had some other things, signatures.
Do that first.
This will be your placing wage of salary approval.
Dave, did you get my uh email on that Fairfield bill, Bill? I got, copied you.
The seals?
Yeah, I'm sure. I think we should be paying as the seal, we shouldn't be paying for the fire blades. Those are going back as a return.
The four thousand dollars.
Yeah, the forty, the forty six hundred. And actually I had another oldest set that I got last fall from Tenco that they took, but I never seen the credit on.
Okay, so. I'll take care of that when we're done with that.
The only thing we should pay is, I think it's a thirty five dollars.
Annual.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
For twenty one, it's that letter that we send to Case and Polly that they wrote for us.
Yep.
As we told them, we're all the skeletons are buried.
This one you wanna sign that, babe?
Uh, should I?
Yeah, it's for everybody, alright.
I have uh the bank cards I discussed.
Yeah.
So Dave, this is Dave's.
So you got, you got those blades at the beginning of June?
Yeah, okay, I just got them freaking things. I thought sure they were the. I'm sure they're the five eight bowl.
They're too big? If they're too small, you can drill it, but it's hard, right? But it's not, we.
We talked about it, it's like you're gonna make a.
So you brought those back now?
Casey's gonna pick them up.
Okay. Yes.
And also, I left, I did leave him a copy of that one, Tenco, those are two different, two different companies, but they uh, Nenco got absorbed by Alom too. So basically, that's what happened with those companies.
Do you think you have a forty two hundred dollar credit from last year that was returned that we haven't seen?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be that hot, it wasn't, wasn't.
The blades, yeah. Okay, so is that all you have to?
Um, got these bank things.
Okay, you just do that.
God, are.
Something that needs mixed in, right? Isn't the motion?
No.
Just the one or all?
Oh, so we're updating to get the new account, road capital equipment and taking Mike Markcott off for all the rest.
Ready?
Please, Joe. See if I could.
Dave, you can handle that permit for me for a question.
Is that the what permit?
Uh, the.
Booze?
For the rolling.
Really? I wanted to talk to you quick. Brett was, me and Brett were talking about it and one of the. Were they doing the same plan as last year that they didn't follow? This is last, this is last year's.
Okay, that's one.
Okay, so they did not follow this last year.
Yeah.
I was, then I had a discussion with Chris that day about it, cause they, all they did was combed off right down the center and then used it for parking and didn't do it the way their, the plan was. This was shoving both lanes over and using the one shoulder for parking and he didn't do it. I didn't know if you had that, so I figured I'd print it off and.
Christine was gonna get the.
Care?
Karen, supposed to get that part of it. So the one piece I have is from uh.
Cause I think the state, I think Jason needs the, be able to.
There's two sections to it.
The permit, right?
It could be, but we can at least make sure ourselves.
Yeah. Hey, while we're signing these, it wouldn't be bad to reach out. So a few years ago, like three or four years ago, I negotiated a fairly good rate. With the bank and they've kind of been overpaying, not really overpaying, but paying us a fair rate. And maybe it's time to reach out to them again and.
I did.
Oh. They said no?
Yeah, sort of. Uh, I got the rates are extremely low, we're already paying you above market on the federal funds. Okay. Um.
Talking.
When I bring these back, I'll have additional face to face discussions, time that was on the phone.
Yeah, we have a lot of money there.
I mean, rates are going up.
They're going up, like all.
They haven't already, they're going to.
They probably need to go up to. They're going up.
Chris.
All my lines of credit.
Or is this last year?
And just keep going up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on the borrowing side.
On the paying side, not so fast.
No, no, I know, yes, they lack, yeah, but I think we should, we should be able to get them for another half percent.
Um. Let me press it, but uh, then there's three plus million.
So I think that's more, I think the.
I would find, I think it's.
I would think, I'd address to making sure that. And we're getting two or one and a half, two, you know, that's my emergency.
It's gone down. It's like, shoot. I think the highest one, we can talk about that after. Quarter percent. And the others are point one five, I had to go look, to be sure.
Okay, okay.
John, I never mentioned wanting to any stable funds, to any safer funds, just.
Oh, we did. We took all the cash into cash and all the bonds. I mean, he did a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, we had a meeting about six weeks ago.
But you don't panic and just abandon.
Yeah, I, I wasn't saying that.
Actually, you end up, you haven't done it yet, but you end up buying more.
I understand.
Yeah.
We're lucky we have the money to buy more, like this two hundred fifty thousand, I mean, it will have that money and not taking out, put more in, it'll have balance, it will recover faster.
But he's sitting on, I had to go look and see what this today, several million cash, I mean.
Oh, yeah. Oh, is all you, or you got that ambulance one you wanna do?
Well, I just, I, I can add this, um annual, it's a budgeting issue, really add.
Jeff talked, yeah, Jeff talked to me the other day about it.
About dispatch, there's gonna be, I'm not sure how it shakes up the contracting aspect of it, but.
That was gonna be my question. Do we do, does the ambulance, do we do the same thing as we do with fire with a rolling average? That I hadn't gotten to talk to Jeff.
I thought of that too, but I don't think you can, because we haven't had a roll, we haven't had a three year bill on. This is for someone getting billed on.
On the dispatching, but the ambulance we have. We, we've been paying ambulance for.
We've been paying dispatching on.
Not dispatching, but the ambulance, but, but that's what I'm meaning is like, he can roll that into, he can roll that into that three year average and he might lose now. But would gain down the road. So dispatching was done? So state, state has. Newport ambulance has been off of state dispatch for uh the same amount of time as fire has and it's been probably three or four years now. It's been pretty good. Yeah, but um what has happened now in state, pretty much, what I've gathered is said, no, we're not doing dispatching for emergency services anymore. So PD has taken on and everybody has moved over to PD and at that same time, they changed the pricing structure, which for them, I don't know if you read the email, the email. Um, it was a set price per year prior, now it's a per call basis. So what he's doing is passing on a per call increase, cause it's going from thirty two thousand to eighty eight thousand for them for dispatching costs. Projected, obviously, depending on how they calls. So they're taking each of our. Town calls and charging us the dispatching. Cost. So they just, they come up with eighty two thousand dollars and they say we get eighty two thousand calls a year and we're charging a dollar a call to whoever calls to that town? It, there, if the PD has a set price per call on how much they're charging each entity for dispatching. So no matter what the call is, you're getting a. This is taking effect. Oh, it's already been in effect. Uh, I think it was July first. But we've never paid. We've never had, we've never had to, because he's probably world developing thirty two thousand dollars prior for all of what they cover, which is a lot. The eighty eight thousand is. Before though, that was included in the fee that we paid for the ambulance. Yeah, that's what I was asking about the rolling average, if we do a rolling average. In the ambulance service. Well, they have already allowed for some of this in our contract, maybe the. So, and that's what, that was my question is, he doesn't specifically call out that we have to pay this separately. So, what, I'll, do you guys care if I, I'll, I'll talk to Jeff to see if this is.
So, do you guys care if I, I'll, I'll talk to Jeff to see if this is. A thing of, he's just letting us know that, but the normal contract's gonna go up something.
And that for this eighty-two thousand is dispatching, how many towns?
Eighty-eight thousand that Newport covers. Coventry, Newport, Derby, Derby Line, Morgan. Try all of that in. Yes, how many ever, there are towns out there, okay, so Newport, Coventry, Derby, Derby Line, Morgan, Charleston, Holland, Brighton, Island Pond. I probably missed.
So it went, so there's at least ten.
Yep.
So maybe eight thousand bucks, but we've already got probably three or four thousand bucks kind of figured or hidden in the original contract. So the increase may be another thousand dollars to the town. Maybe.
I'll talk to Jeff tomorrow about it.
Alright.
Actually, I remember the other day, he was telling me about that.
One last question, this is radio licensing.
Oh crap.
Is that you?
We were gonna talk about doing radios and repeaters to do off of this, I, um, I think we should pay it.
Okay.
Is that just to have the license?
That's having the license for the frequency, so we, as long as we have it, we can do whatever we want in it, so.
Move on.
Yeah. Two fifty?
Is that, is that under the town actually, or?
It's under the town. You have a radio, you reach out to your guys?
Yeah, well, what happened was when we transit, we always use them. Japanese or whatever, when they got done, guys, just try it out, it's it works, it works.
So that, that was, that covers more radios than we have now, that was originally for the fire department thing was going on. But, um, yeah, I would say.
It's easy.
I told him I'd work with him on this, I'm getting radios and repeaters, so that would get somebody in here to talk about it, but having. Hundred fifty bucks just to have it, that's.
Hundred ten. It's harder to get than.
Was it five years or?
Ten years, ten years?
It's hundred ten bucks for ten years?
Yeah, it's better to keep it, because now I'm trying to get a frequency appears. Because Canada complains, but yet they can do it.
Okay.
So this is a report. That's where the base nation of the.
That's low enough, we don't need the motion. Doesn't fly out places.
Yes.
You said Jim's gonna present this.
Looking forward to retiring, huh?
Murphy, maybe, does he do it?
Oh, yes, yes, they're gonna do for the Coventry ball festival.
That's, we need his plans.
I asked for it, I asked for it last week.
Yeah.
So it's off subject, but. Their plan from last year. They didn't follow.
Right, yeah, they said they blocked off the road and some people parked, is what the email I got said, but.
They weren't even allowing them to park, they didn't have enough food to park.
I will make sure it says that this year.
I had a conversation with Chris about that last year.
There's something else we wanted from, but I don't know how many, make sure they park people, oh, um, not letting any liquor and alcohol.
Bring your own, bring your own alcohol. You go to the beer tent.
That's where I stayed.
That is where you stay.
Ask last.
Hey, yeah, okay. Alright, warrants, is that ready for that?
I'm ready for warrants.
I'm gonna make a motion to accept the warrants as they are with the exception. Of holding Howard P Fairfield out with a check total of four thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Due to the blades. For the road commissioner being returned.
So move. All those in favor?
Aye.
So is that gonna be able, we, we're gonna be able to pay the thirty-five dollars?
That's thirty, she's gotta do a little check.
It was a sucker.
Yeah, so it's gonna end up being another warrant. Cause there is all one check.
Oh, David, I don't know if you noticed, I've been trying to code again, but I've been using a piece of paper out of the two thousand. Twenty.
That's something. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if I have that. So it'd be helpful in that, but.
That's the same one. It's the same one. It's like, why is there two, one, two, one, so here, you got another one to sign.
Yeah, that's the one.
Jack and I was doing. Did you make a note somewhere and you put void on that check?
I emailed.
Alright.
Yeah, don't, actually, don't.
Don't write on that, not the check.
No.
Will they write on the order?
That's fine. We have one.
We do have one, just gotta set it up. But we came up to set up.
Yeah, we, Dave, thought about putting it, I was, we didn't think it was gonna be. We didn't think it was gonna be.
Is it the one that goes in a window?
It's better tonight.
It's a, it's a, it's a.
The one we had.
Yeah, still have it.
Works good.
Yeah, unfortunately, it was cold up here. Yeah.
I'm gonna get my truck and drive in the door.
I just jump out, those people live on there.
Nope.
I'm waiting for a motion.
If that's it. I make a motion adjourned. So, so move, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want that?
I've got an email.